How to order the planning and commissioning for March 13th coming about at 7 o'clock? Can we give a little comment, please?
Commissioner Hart-Priet Bains.
President.
Commissioner Francisco Castellanos.
President.
Commissioner Mario Mendoza.
President.
Chair Luis Enrique Flores.
Presidents.
For the record, Vice Chair Roy Soria and alternate Commissioner Minaj Bains are excused tonight.
Thank you. Do we all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to extend an act of gratitude for our special meeting last eight days ago. Thank you, too, for speedily writing these up. It was a very long meeting and it was a very quick turnaround. Do any of the commissioners have any comments on the minutes? No? Okay, I just have one quick edit. We're looking at page 15 of the minutes, the last bullet point. It says this company provides itself on bin eco-green to a specific green eco-green. And can I add a statement on page 15? Okay, the second bullet point where it says Director Kenny said subdivision directly to the west. I remember during that part of the discussion, somebody had mentioned that there is a well there that has never been used. Can we just add that for the minutes if that statement is still true?
I believe I'm the one who said that.
Okay, can we just add that to the minutes? Okay, Paul. With that, I will be looking for a motion to approve the act of amendments of amendments.
My motion to approve the amendments.
I second that. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hart-Priet Bains.
Yes.
Commissioner Francisco Castellanos.
Yes.
Commissioner Mario Mendoza.
Yes.
Chair Luis Enrique Flores.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Thank you. I have a review of the city council update.
Yes, on March 20th, the city council will be here in the site design review, conditional use permitted field and development agreement for Livingston family apartments. And then depending on what happens tonight, one of our applicants will be on April 3rd, maybe the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I have official comments. I'm going to be on here first time in person being commented on the item that is not on the agenda. We're hoping to act at 7:04. And it will go at 7:04. We might want to approach here and two of them denied. The first one is conditional use permit 2012 that served to farming within the city limits. Done?
Yes, good evening. One page. I apologize for taking so much time. I guess I used a staff report in my binder. All right, thank you very much. Okay, this is a conditional use permit 2012 to continue illegal non-conforming agricultural use within the city. The property is located approximately 15 acres. It's two parcels located at Campbell and Hammett. And the property had in the recent past been a peach orchard, been used by the Yawes family. And now, the last couple of years, it has been in rye grass for erosion purposes and also to bale and sell those bales. It's only been a couple of months since the city council approved a use permit process for agriculture within city limits. One of the conditions is the property has to have been in active farming within the last two years. And Mr. Yawes has submitted an invoice for the rye grass seed that he has been using on that site. The applicant, Blaney Yawes, is partnering up with a gentleman by the name of Meng Wu. And Meng Wu and his three family members wish to garden that site. They wish to have an assortment of vegetables and fruits and create a little fruit and vegetable stand there as well and sell those products. The fruit and vegetable stand does require a use permit by itself, but that's why those two are combined on this use permit. So what you would be looking at tonight is a conditional use permit for the farming use and for the vegetable stand use. The applicant has submitted a list of the various, besides the site plan, he submitted a list of the various plants and other items he will be selling there. He did approach staff about using chemicals on the property. When the city council first undertook having this use permit process for farming within city limits, they were interested in organic type farming because it is within a very short distance of single-family residential. The applicant has said that he would like to use these chemicals. I had contacted public works to give the cut sheets on what they are and what their use is for and what the wages are. He is perfectly willing to farm without the use of chemicals if that is the desire of the planning commission. He does not intend to have electricity on site. There is electricity for the deep water well which will be used for irrigation and is currently being used for irrigation. He proposes hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the sales of the fruit and vegetables. He had mentioned parking on site, that there is no pavement or gravel for parking on site nor are there curb cuts. There are no businesses on that side of Hammett and there is quite an industry parking if the commission allows him to use that. As I mentioned, there is the fruit stand and any equipment that will be used will either be removed from the site, like tractors and anything like that that they're going to use. Smaller pieces of equipment and anything else that they put on the garden, any sort of containers or seeds will be kept within the fruit stand itself and will be stored at it as well. The fruit stand will require a building permit. He proposes it to be a 10 foot by 15 foot and anything over 10 foot by 12 foot does require a building permit. So there will be additional review of that structure itself. And do not see the applicants here, but I will try to answer any questions that you might have.
I just have one quick question for the open minutes of public. On page three of the staff report, on page three of the staff report, there's a top, there's currently an opportunity to purchase fresh from the garden fruit and vegetables in the fruit stand. The downtown market is starting very, very soon. Do you want to sell fruit and vegetables? Is there a plan to sell fruit and vegetables to the market?
I'm not sure. There's still being some research and questions being asked as to the county's regulations as far as fruits and vegetables. Currently, I believe you have to only sell the fruits and vegetables that you grow yourself. So they're checking into finding out if a person were to go buy 15 cases of oranges, they could bring them down here and sell them or if they can only sell their own. So it's still kind of up in the air as to what's going to happen with produce.
Does the commission have any questions before we open the floor? On the side?
No.
Saying that, we'll open the public hearing for the time of 7:00 to 11:00. And the closing at 7:00 to 11:00. Be quickly. So let's have a little discussion, hopefully with fruit, and then on the inter motion on the side. Can we should have any comments?
Well, no concerns I have about the parking on the, like parking, like you said, there is no actual parking made for the customers to park.
No concern about parking?
Yeah. Parking is my concern on here. I think the idea of growing vegetables and setting up is a great idea. I don't think you have anything here to account for that purpose. But my concern is the parking, if we do get more than one type of parking.
Well, the advantage of using the street parking there is that it is paved curved better, no sidewalk, they're curving better. Therefore, if a person comes to purchase some produce and borrows by chance leaking antipies or something, it is on the street, it wouldn't be captured by the city. Whereas if it was up on the ground itself, there might be some concerns that the parking area would need to be paved to capture those type of fluids.
The application where they're proposing to add this panel which was right up its walnut, not on Hammett. All right, is it on?
It's, it is a little bit closer to walnut. He is showing a 25-foot setback all the way around the garden. But he is happy to place any structure that you want there. If you want the side fenced, they'd be willing to fence it. He's more than open to any suggestions that you might have.
Thanks, she always answered my question. I've been waiting a while if they, it would be a fence around. So probably it would be a, maybe not a high fence, but just around like the big street for the kids walking so they don't walk to the field.
They haven't, you know, planned on it yet because of the cost, but they would be willing to do something about fencing if that is your desire.
What is, what would the stewardship be of, in the wood? Would you buy like a metal container or how, and on getting that shed?
My understanding is it would be one of those prefabricated ones that you put together, similar to like a metallic garage.
I think the idea is to sort of copy the one that's on Monovista and Turlock near the CSE there.
Correct.
So if you, if you're to choose CSE, it's a pretty standard and try to do that here. And it's the same people owning both locations.
I don't know that for sure.
That's what it's trying to do. Any other comments? I say a note? I just have some quick ones. If we were to approve it, I would like to make a note to limit the use of pesticides. Like direct on the frame of excuse. I'm trying to think, two steps ahead when this comes to council and they had already met. They had already verbalized that the reason why we're going down this path is so that when we get to a project like this, they use a pesticide would be limited to non-existent. So whatever our recommendation is, we always have to think of what's in the council thing. And I think having it already established at our level, we can use it at their level. So we will motion for approval of this item. We can make that as a, as a note. I do have a question about the secure fencing, but it's not a deal breaker for me. I just worry about vandalism that may happen to property. But if there's no check on the commission, I'm okay with not having it. I really wish that applicant was here because I'd want to know more about shading, if there was shading available for the farmers on this property. Because that's, it seems like it's family owned and they're not hiring any outside help. So I'm good with letting that go. And they mentioned they're going to have a support party around the facilities, which is great. So I'll look forward with the motion and if you can include the, in the motion to write to refer to using pesticide that we agree.
Before we entertain a motion, I'd like to just make a suggestion. There are some due process concerns with deciding on a conditional use permit with the applicant not present. My understanding from talking to staff about this is that the applicant does want this to go forward and is also, there's some time sensitivity, wants to get the stuff in the ground as soon as possible if the commission decides to approve it. So I wouldn't expect it to be a problem if the commission were to approve it. But even the imposing conditions on the permit without the applicant present does raise some concerns that the applicant might object to. My recommendation would be if the commission were to consider approving the permit tonight, add a condition to reconsider it at the next planning commission meeting. Or in the near future, when the applicant will be present to, so we can have a discussion about the conditions that would be included in the permit.
Is our decision that applicant be present?
It would. That solution, I think, gives them the opportunity to have a hearing on the condition. The alternative is we can go ahead and entertain a motion to approve based on the, based on the conditions in front of the commission right now. But then contact the applicant as soon as possible. And if they oppose any of those conditions, they would have the option to appeal to the council. There's, which is also, which is also a fine alternative. So we do it either ways. If the commission were going to approve it, either add a condition to bring them back for review in the near future or just make sure that we let them know as soon as possible if they object to any of the conditions, that they would need to appeal it to the council. The, the problem with that is that the permit, Donna correct me if I'm wrong on this. I don't think the permit, I don't think they would be able to use the property for the permitted use pending appeal.
Right.
The reason why I'm verbalizing, directing to reframe the pesticide use is that in the, in the staff report, I said that the applicant is willing to refrain. So I sort of took that as it wouldn't have any issue with not using it. And if the council has already said it out loud that they would prefer not to have any pesticides, to limited use of pesticides, that we should consider it here before they consider it there. So that's where I'm coming from on that. That's good.
This does not go to the city council.
Oh, does it?
It's a deuse permit that is provided or approved or denied by the planning commission.
It only goes to the council if it's appealed. And, you know, the reality is that the applicant had noticed that the item was here, had the opportunity to appear and decided not to show up tonight for one reason or another. Again, if the planning commission weren't to deny it or were to impose the conditions that they disagreed with, their recourse would be to appeal to the council. But that, you know, approving it while imposing conditions and then having them appeal would preclude them from being able to use the property for the permitted use until, until that's processed. So the alternative would be to set a condition to impose a periodic review in the, in the near future and allow them to reconsider or present their case at the planning commission without having to appeal the item. And they were notified at this meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
They just were here, are here.
I would like to go forward with the motion with some sort of maybe not super strict language about limiting the use of pesticides. Maybe something like with the condition of limited use, not absolute elimination of use. Is there any way that that's a little bit more applicant-friendly?
I mean, say you could use a bucket instead of a tub? How do we make the distinction between limited? Limited to them might be twice a year to do the whole garden. Or it might be, you know, do half the garden or use half the pesticides. I'm not sure how far you want to limit it. Are there, there's three chemicals, one and not the other two or?
Well, I know that I have received, Public Works has submitted some very alarming stuff on the use of these specifically. What is actually the scene? So I would just like to keep our public safety and especially since it's so close to residential. There's preschool a few meters away, so. I don't know what the commission feels at this time. Are these, some of these pesticides, are they commercial?
Yes, I do. To be honest, I'd only heard of one of them, the Paraquat, before we had decided to come forward.
Carverol is considered America's most popular pesticide. So let's get a motion on here.
Well, I was just trying to kind of help formulate it. I think based on my concern, and that's like, that's a perfectly good condition that can be imposed on the, on the permit, I'm wondering if one option would be to adopt a permit with a prohibition on using any pesticides, but then again, have the, have the applicant come back next month and make their case if they want to come up with it, help the commission come up with a solution for limited application of pesticides. This is really what some of the other options might be.
I like that option. I think that's applicant-friendly and also public safety conscious and good stewardship in the environment, so.
So then the proposed resolution would be modified then to add a condition prohibiting the use of pesticides, ending the next planning commission consideration of the CUP and then adding another condition to bring the applicant back. And we could say within 90 days, just to give the applicant the opportunity to, for some reason they can't be here next month, maybe two months from now or something like that. But give them the opportunity to have that, have that hearing in front of the commission.
If the applicant chooses.
If they choose, yeah.
At that time, could we add like basically the fencing, if one was fencing on it?
Yeah, so when the, when the, when the permit comes back to the commission for reconsideration, it would be similar to the 444 Main Street permit. That was a reconsideration with the commission heard two months ago and had the opportunity to add or change conditions at that time. So it would be similar to, similar to that. Hopefully a little less contentious.
So in the proposed resolution, we do have conditions and B reads, "Proposed herbicides and pesticides of carverol, paraquat, and methimide shall not be used. Any other proposed chemicals shall be reviewed and approved by Public Works trained chemical applicator." Is that what for the mission?
It's under, could not be included in the resolution, right?
Yes. Indeed. So then we could add an F to say that if it's unhappy with the decision on the chemicals, they could come back within 90 days?
Yeah, because they only stated that they were planning on using those three. So I, I like the idea of adding the F item, sub item to, as another condition to return the, to return the resolution in 90 days if applicant chooses to contest.
I think that works and they would still have the option if they, if they didn't want to wait, they could appeal to the council, which would be the normal appeal procedure that they, they wouldn't be able to use the property.
With that, all motion to approve the conditional use permit, resolution 2012 dash?
Oi.
Oi. As amended, adding the F to return the item in 90 days for reconsideration upon applicant review? So there's a motion. Can I get a second? A second minute. Get a motion in real second. If you have a, we need a roll call.
Commissioner Bains?
Yes.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Chair Flores?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0 to approve.
All right, thank you. Next item is the zoning council. They will be having a medical group and their application to the medical clinic in 1623 here in Brooklyn, Houston, in the low-density residential zoning district.
Yes, good evening. Currently, medical clinics are not permitted in low-density residential zoning district. This project is similar to the one that you saw a year ago for the Livingston Medical Group. They were non-conforming use in the public facility zone and had interest in moving to another public facility zone. So this was heard by the planning commission and city council and a conditional use permit was added if a medical clinic wanted to go to the public facility zone. So this is similar. This item would be moving forward toward the city council and many the zoning code to allow medical clinics as a conditional use in the R1 zone. The clinic currently has several locations that they're operating in the, in the nearby areas. And they wish to move into this currently vacant home that was used by Grace Home to care for some disabled children. When this project came forward with children, staff did spend quite a bit of time within the home doing inspections and ensuring it was a good solid structure. The clinic proposes to go in there, a doctor, an assistant, and a receptionist. And they propose approximately three to four patients an hour. And there is an attachment that shows an aerial view of the site. And I believe it was taken in mid-afternoon because there are very few shadows there. But you can see very few cars parked on that street. Doesn't get a lot of use during the daytime. One of the positive things about having a clinic in this area would be the walkability from the residential area or from Grace Home itself or from the school. But one does need to keep in mind that this change would not just be made for them. It would also allow others to be able to locate clinics within the same zone. One that does come to mind is Dr. Carvin, the dentist, has been trying to find an alternate location within the city. He's been looking in the downtown and the commercial districts for this, but unable to find a location that he can move into and expand. This would also provide him with an opportunity, if this moved forward and it was approved, it would provide him with an opportunity of increasing the scope of his search and hopefully he'll be able to stay in Livingston. We do have, the clinic is proposed to run for five days a week, Monday through Friday initially, eight to five. They would consider longer hours of clinic on Saturdays depending on the reception from the community. Besides the use charge, which would add a conditional use underneath the R1 district, we are also proposing an amendment to 5-2-2, the residential definitions. This would add number 14, shown as a use, an office engaged in medical dental and related services. This classification would include chiropractic, dental, and doctors' offices, and medical laboratories. This classification would include chiropractic, dental and doctors' offices, and medical laboratories. So, it does narrow the scope of what could go in there if this is approved. Is this consistent with the general plan? The use permit process does have four or five words required for approval. They would, in the future, if this were to pass the city council and become an ordinance and then a zoning code, they would still have to come for a conditional use permit in front of you where conditions could be added to the site, to the proposed use. And if you have any questions, we do have the applicant and support here to debate. Thank you.
If there were any questions or comments before we open the public access here, just not on their faces. So, any comments before you go?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's moving up, it sounds like you said. I mean, there's a lot of places, private, you know, residential areas, they have even specialists. New Dr. Hanson just behind six, I believe it's 17th or 18th Street.
Yes.
And that's a residential area. I also know in Turlock, a couple of places that's in the residential area, so. I would find, and also, any other questions?
Not from the, maybe other than the, measuring?
Just, would it be like a regular, like, doctor's office, I'm guessing, would it be? Or what kind of, I guess, services would you have to provide to the city administration? And what kind of, I guess, payments would you have to accept into that, you know, city administration? Not, it's not high income, but a low income, what kind of insurance would you have to hold for, or just people, some of that?
I'll just open the public here and officially at 7:30 to.
Sorry, I'm acting as someone else. I'm Tim Johnston. I'm the president and chairman of NFA Medical Group. We're a group that is primarily, primary care group, did you hear?
Excuse me, can you see the mic is on? Push the button, please.
It's hard to push.
I think it's on.
Perfect, thank you.
My voice is 90, you're actually hearing my own voice on something, but that's okay. I'm Jim Johnston. I'm the medical director and president of NFA Medical Group. We are a primary care group. In other words, mostly family physicians. We have a couple pediatricians, OBGYN, and internal medicine. So, that would all be termed primary care. And we are, the core group of family physicians are the teachers for the residency program in Merced. So, I'm a faculty at UC Davis Medical School. I'm a clinical professor from UC Davis. And so, we teach the residents and then we have service to the communities also by service and clinics. And this has been one of our core missions is to provide care to some outlying areas. So, every two weeks I go to Mariposa, I've been doing it more than 20 years, do the prenatal clinic care and bring the girls down from Mariposa and deliver here in Merced County. One physician goes to Chau Chila, we help Chau Chila, and we have a little clinic in Hillmark. And we have the Delhi Medical Clinic that we've been running since 1995. And we've got people at Castle and other places. Now, this, and we also have been sending for quite a few years, help on Friday afternoon to the Livingston Medical Group. We're not unknown to Livingston Medical Group up until a few years ago. Every doctor that worked at that clinic, except one, had been from our residency program. So, we've been sending people up there in the afternoon on Friday to do some OB care, some GYN care and pre-potency for many years. We also admit all the Livingston Medical Group patients to the hospital, Mercy Hospital in Merced. I have to sign an agreement every year for them if they have LUSR, LUSR Shield, et cetera, and healthcare. They have to prove that they have physician coverage in the hospital to admit their patients to the hospital. And that none of their physicians admit at the hospitals. They're all clinic-based physicians. For a while, Dr. Dolph was going up to Emmanuel. I also carry privileges at Emmanuel Medical Center. So, anyway, he was the only one really that admitted to the hospital. And Dr. Blacker, the ETS, for them, used to bring patients down to Merced. Other than that, we take care of the Livingston Medical Group patients there. What transpired here, I've been watching Livingston for a long time and I received a telephone call last, not too long ago, from this young man here. This is Grant Medifin. He's from the Cressy Bellico area. He went through our residency program for three years. Graduated, became board certified, and he was young, worked in the Doja. He worked in the Doja clinic there for three years and finished his time down there. He called me and said, I want to come back to this area. His dad was a very beloved teacher that had a lot of height. And his grandpa was a very beloved gentlemanly surgeon in Merced in the past, when I first came. Most people do doctorial medicine. He's passed on since then. But anyway, Grant called and said, do you have any work for me with the group? And of course, I've been thinking about Livingston. I come up here every few months, drive around and look and see what's available. And now I've got a physician that wants to work up here. We just started working with the Grace Nursing Home not too long ago. And now our group is taking care of all the patients at Grace Nursing Home. We've got some changes over there. So, anyway, our idea, then we went to what the cottages, if we're looking for state. And it's a real nice facility. It's in the neighborhood. We walked the neighborhood. We talked to the neighbors already in that area to see if there was any concerns from the neighbors. There have been some concerns when they had the last move home from above the neighbors. And I think those concerns have vanished. But we walked, Becky and I and others, walked the neighborhood already. We would like to put a park and we should get the staff to park offsite, actually, up by the crossway or up by the market. It's not too heavily. And we think there's enough parking there for probably three patients an hour is what usually practice would seek. So, we'd like to put a little neighborhood planning there. It's close to the school, et cetera, and protect the medicine there. Put a medical assistant and then we need one other person at the front desk for referrals, checking in people, answering the telephone, et cetera. So, that's our plan. We've got a wonderful physician. To answer your question about underserved, well, that's, Hillmark and Delhi are mostly medical-based and private patients with sliding scale fees. This will most likely be a rural health clinic eventually, but it gets the extra help from the state. It's not like Livingston. There's a fairly qualified health clinic. So, we've been operating, Delhi is a rural health clinic since 1995. And after quite a few years of quite frankly losing money in Hillmark and keeping it going, we finally got approval for our inspection for rural health clinic status at Hillmark, which will help our revenue. The state gives some extra monies, you know, determine the cost report at the end of the year. And they give a little extra money to make it worthwhile. But I've been, my group has been just like Grace Home, supporting their mission. They've been supporting their mission. And we've been supporting our clinic in Hillmark. So, we looked at your mission, vision and values that the city has. They line up with ours very well. We'd like to try a little neighborhood planning here.
Thank you. There's law, the object is sort of near the podium. Do you have a question before I remember the public? Do you have a question?
I have a comment that you could go ahead and weigh this on the place. What do you want to name it?
Right, all right. So, the comment is still open and the quarter, the audience can play.
Stand over there?
Yes.
My name is Bill Key. I live in 1601 Second Street, right across the street from where you're putting the money in. You may mention it back. You talked to the neighbors. You must have missed it.
So, we went to your house. You worked there.
Oh, really? And we talked to several, there's several people on Second Street that I've talked to and then I don't recommend talking to you at all, but anyways, we're there. I have several concerns. Number one, you have, you said you were going to have three or four patients an hour. That would be the maximum number of patients you can see.
Yes, sir.
And you have a staff?
Yes, sir.
Two. Approximately how many?
Two.
Two and a doctor. Okay, and you mentioned something about you want to have interns there, people you want to train?
No.
No? Where do you got to park?
Well, I was hoping that we'd park up towards the little market up there for along the.
Excuse me? So, we need to have the comments on, into a microphone so that there's a transcript of the hearing?
Okay, pardon?
Maybe one idea would be if you could lay out your questions and we could keep, try to keep track of them and then have the applicant respond to all of them.
I'll talk to you and you talk to him. Right. Okay, ask them about the parking.
I'll talk to you and you talk to him.
Right. Okay, ask them about the parking.
What are you saying? Is that you can answer questions, I'll answer questions, and he can answer for you because we need to have a comment mic to.
Yeah, go ahead and finish your, conclude your comments and.
Well, again, I've lived there since 1970. It's been a real nice, quiet, peaceful neighborhood. And there are people other than myself that are concerned about the congestion and the traffic. And I think you can see it is what's there, a concern. I was the same concerned when Grace people were going to put in the medical facility that they had before. And they sent their PR people down there and they did a job, they convinced me it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a real problem. But again, you know, we live in what is for a reason. It's because it's a nice, small community. It's not congestion. It's not people helping, annoying. Three patients an hour, eight times, that's 24 patients a day, with traffic congestion in the neighborhood. So, those are all some of the concerns. What type of patients are, is this just low income medical or is it over everybody? Do you have a thing?
This is my live on.
I'll just, I'll make a statement.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have a list of questions to ask the applicant and that he and the applicant can answer all of the questions. So, if you keep going back and forth, other members of the audience who want to go up and ask their questions, this would be good.
I should, I would make a statement now and then.
It doesn't make any use for the applicant to tell the question at the same time.
My name is Bonnie Key. I live at 1601 Second Street. And I am against changing the zoning. The zoning district. It's been a low density. We've lived there for over 40 years. It's a nice family. There's kids running around. The people next door have a son that just turned one. The people across the street have a lot of children in and out. I just, I, I, I like the idea of the medical clinic, and I know this sounds terrible, but not in my neighborhood. This is a residential area. Once you change it, then what's to, somebody else will come and say, well, this has been rezoned. We want to have something small in here. And then somebody else comes in and pretty soon you lose your neighborhood that's been a family neighborhood for all these years. So, and many, many of the neighbors are talking about this. We were able to come tonight. But up and down the street, people are very concerned about changing the zoning for our neighborhood. So, I want you to really think heavily about the change.
Did we get any comments or any letters from the neighbors?
We were contacted by one person down the street who did not get a public notice, but when we checked our map, they were outside our 300-foot radius. Which is why they didn't get one.
So, not off Second Street got a, a notice of?
Everyone within 300 feet. And so, if you go north of that block, it's just the last three houses at the end of the block did not get public notices.